The United States of America, in its history of religious stance, a nation under God, in its soul, the religion of this.
This is what I'm gonna set up here, it's gonna be a little bit long, and then I go back to it.
Will I call please?
Mrs. Hollinger?
Yeah.
Mr. Dean Genaro?
Present.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mrs. Holtz?
Here.
Mrs. Kirschner?
Here.
Mr. Seers?
Here.
Mrs. Sturgis?
Here.
Mr. Liller?
Here.
Mrs. Ferguson Miller?
Here.
All present.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from our September 22nd and our October 13th meetings.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Presentation and reports. Mr. Ha?
Thank you, Mrs. Ferguson Miller. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see some familiar faces and some that I haven't met yet. But we look forward to recognizing many of you in the room in a few minutes. So I have a couple of updates. One, the ACTI Community Information Session that was held on October 16th is actually posted on our district website. It is underneath the Board Presentation tab on the website. Other districts that send kids to ACTI, they're also doing the same. It's also on the ACTI website. So we would very much appreciate you going out, taking a look and reviewing that information if you haven't done so already. But again, it is on our website, but also the ACTI. A couple of other updates just around athletics. Again, congratulations to our girl soccer team. Again, really good game on Saturday. Fortunately, we had three to two loss. Two very well placed shots by Brandon Wyon Heights. Again, really did us in, but the girls certainly represented the district well. And again, congratulations to them on a great season. Isabel Studley, again, golf championships in Hap and last week, 18th as a sophomore. So I think bright future ahead for Isabel as well. My next update is really around remote learning and really our transition to, I'll say, becoming more like some other neighbors that we have. And I really just want to walk and talk through some of the history of our remote learning and really where we're looking to head potentially this year. I would ask the board in particular, again, no vote tonight. I will be asking you for a thumbs up from the information I'll share. If you are supportive of the information, then I would plan to bring an item back for a vote because of what then requires some change to the calendar. So here we go. For several years, we in the district have implemented remote learning days when conditions required school closures. This practice allowed instruction to continue virtually and limited the need for more traditional makeup days. However, in the last two years specifically, several districts in Adams County have provided up to five traditional snow days per year with no remote learning requirements. As a result, we've received feedback from staff, families, and several board members and community members for us to revert back to this more traditional approach for our students and our community. So our transition plan from remote learning to traditional snow days would look like the following. We have a board approved academic calendar that provides approximately 945 instructional hours at the elementary level and approximately 1,090 hours at the secondary level. Both of those numbers surpassed the PDE required hours of 900 at the elementary level and 990 hours at the secondary level respectively. Our current calendar also includes one built in makeup day, which is April 6th of 2026. So a plan for the board to consider, again, no vote tonight, simply a thumbs up, is that so I can communicate information to our staff and our community tomorrow if you're supportive. Again, provided that there is board support, as I mentioned, I'd bring this back November 17th. So plan would be utilize five traditional snow days throughout this year if we have winter weather accordingly without any remote learning expectations. So students would not have to make up four days because they will be traditional snow days with no, again, expectation to make up the hours. If a fifth day is needed, we would then utilize that built in snow makeup day, April 6th. So the first four days, no expectation to make up because we have an overage of time and hours. That fifth day, if needed, we would utilize that makeup day on April 6th. If the number of days exceeds five days, we would then really look to implement our remote learning. Looking back historically, the last three years, we haven't had a need, I'm going to use more than four. If we would, again, we'd have that fifth day and the makeup day in the calendar. And then beyond five, we look to utilize remote learning. I just caution you again, even though we have the overage of hours, four of those days, again, there's roughly 5.4 hours of instructional time every day at the elementary and about 6.3 at the secondary. So four times those numbers, we get to 20 plus hours pretty quickly. The secondary, I think we're more than okay in terms of the hours of meeting that PDE requirement. Elementary, we start to get a little bit closer to that 900. And remember, if we have two hour delays, early dismissals, that also counts to reduce that instructional time because we want to be in school for the entire day. So anything you would like me to repeat or questions that you have on that information?
The end of the year day is not going to change, correct?
The end of the year day, meaning May 29th?
Last day of school. I guess my question is, let's say we have a horrible winter and we have nine days. Four of those days are going to be remote learning. We're not messing with the end of the year.
No. So one of the things that, again, when I started, very clearly heard from the community, don't move graduation.
Correct.
So that is not our plan. So to answer your question, Mr. Liller, that last day is May 29th in this year's calendar. That would be that last student day in graduation. So our plan would not be to move graduation. Yes.
Did we get any feedback from the teachers?
We have pivoted to this position, Mrs. Kirschner, recently, so.
Oh, that's what I.
I will tell you again, our plan would be to, like I said, communicate out to staff and also then really work to develop what those expectations might look like for our staff. But I can't sit here tonight and say we.
So we don't know if they like this idea or dislike?
I can tell you this, the feedback that we have received, I would think that this would be a benefit to and supported by staff.
Okay.
Is there, excuse me, is there a possibility of multiple two hour delays pushing us to an extra day? Or taking away one of those snow days?
Yeah, so very fair question. I wish I had that crystal ball to predict the weather.
If we don't meet the hours.
Then I'd have to bring something back to you. But again, I think we'd still have an overage of roughly 20 plus hours. So we'd really need substantial weather to.
I love snow, I mean.
Me too, yeah. Obviously, we'd have to monitor that, Mr. Fisher, and bring that back to you as a board.
I just want to understand, sorry. So four days, no, they're complete snow days, or actually a fifth day, but that fifth day you would just make up in school on a makeup day on the calendar?
April 6th.
And then after that, it would be remote days if that's, okay.
Right. And at this time, we don't have to work on that plan, because we have five days.
This is just for, got it. So we want to get this in play first.
And then we will work on the rest moving forward. But this plan has to be now because.
It is the end of October.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, just a thumbs up so I know to bring it back to you in November. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hill?
There's a report from you, Sue.
Nothing.
Governor, I, Mr. Ha, if you could.
Mr. Will?
I just, there was a question asked at the last board meeting regarding capital projects that we had budgeted for. So I brought my list, I'll report on those. The high school auditorium stadium curtain project is complete. The utility vehicle was purchased and is being used. The stadium scoreboard project is complete. Stadium lights project is complete. The library refresh is complete. Maintenance to the building, the maintenance building group is scheduled for spring. And the elementary gym floor is scheduled for June after school dismisses.
Sir?
Thank you.
Mrs. Zep? I have one of fate to share and one I think that our families are going to love. And also, our attendance secretaries at the school are going to be in favor of too. We are getting ready to roll out a new feature within our family access portal. Family access is our Skyward student information system where our families can go in, check their student's grades, check their attendance, discipline, different things. We're going to be rolling out the ability for families to submit online attendance requests and notes, excuses. So no more handwriting excuses, sending them with your child. Hopefully, they make it to school or no more having to call and leave voicemail messages at the school that your child might be out on a certain day. Families will be able to enter that all through family access. And then it'll start a workflow where our tenant secretaries can go online. They can accept it, ask questions, and then once it's processed, it'll automatically go into the student's attendance history. So we think this is a feature that is long overdue. It can be completed online on the web version or on the Skyward mobile app. So what we're going to be doing is after we've configured this system, we're going to train our secretaries on what steps they need. And then we'll be rolling this out with instructions through Parent Square with some short videos and step-by-step instructions on how families can smith their absence online. So we're excited about rolling that out soon.
Perfect, thank you. That sounds like principal updates, yes.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. All right. So I want to start by congratulating two of our students, Charlotte Holmes and Adele Hess, who qualified for the PMEA District 7 Chorus Festival. So we're super proud of them. They're going to be at the chorus festival at Boiling Springs, and then they will compete for Region 5 chorus. So we're super proud of those two. The middle school PDIS committee successfully hosted its end of marking period acknowledgement ceremony. So they celebrated the top students who earned the most behavioral shield tickets. And then as a special reward, they won a trip to Gettysburg for an off-campus lunch and a round of mini golf at the new course. So it was a great success and the students were super excited. Just to update you on the big brothers, big sisters. So they had interviews with the high schoolers earlier this week, which would be last week, because this is the beginning of this week. And so we're going to keep moving forward with that. Let's see, a little glimpse into our elementary school. I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Reiniker. She has created a wonderful adapted music for our autistic support students. And it's just a wonderful time of their day. It happens once a week, so it's in addition to the other specials that they have. But it just provides our students with a wonderful opportunity to explore instruments, different music, tempos with items like a parachute, and just listen and sing along with a variety of songs. So I invite you all to come and check that out if you'd like. It's just a really special part of the day. I do want to share kind of some down news with Collaborating for Youth who hosts our after-school program. Due to the budget, they will be temporarily, hopefully, pausing that after-school program at the end of this week. So that does impact about 30 of our families. There is a waiting list for that too. So I just wanted to, you know, keep you all in the loop with that, that we won't have an after-school program at the elementary after this Friday. Lastly, I just want to invite you all to our fall parade this Friday. See our students in costumes and parade around the track, weather pending, at 2 o'clock. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment on agenda items I have tonight is Allison Hess.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as an elementary teacher, but also as a parent and a community member. And similar to many people, when we heard that Ms. Rebert is going to be resigning from Fairfield, very sad. I wanted to talk about something that you see a lot of the positivity that she brings to the community, to the building, to the students. But I want to talk about something that you don't see because you're not in the elementary building every day. Every single morning, Ms. Rebert goes to every single classroom and she greets every teacher, every staff member, every student, and she says good morning. And it's a huge smile and a wave. And every student turns and they talk and they smile and they wave back. I'm telling you this story because I want to ask that when you form a committee of administrators, of teachers, of board members, perhaps some families, to fill her position, you remember this story. Because she has brought a great deal of positivity, leadership, communication, and presence to the elementary building. Something that you can't do when you work remotely. She is interacting with everyone every single day. I ask that you find somebody that has her same level of positivity and presence to fill her position, and you're going to be greatly missed. And I just thank you for all you've done for all of the students, again, as a mom, a community member, and a teacher. Thank you for your service as well, and appreciate you listening. And please remember that story. Thanks.
Allison.
It's getting really hard to not associate the elementary school with me, so thank you.
We didn't vote her out yet.
I need a motion for A, B, and C. I need discussion.
Super bumpy to go.
Hey, what happens if we deny it?
Huh? What happens if we deny it?
It's getting messy or something, you don't want.
A.
Yes. Line H to me.
Exactly.
All right. Yeah, so again, I have a H. Again, if you remember, around the clock here. So Mrs. Kane was our safety and security coordinator when she transitioned to a friendly immediate unit, because of her experiences. She and Mr. Herman then worked last year to ultimately then do what we're recommending here, transitioning Mr. Herman into that role of safety and security coordinator.
Perfect. Thank you.
Jay?
Jay is due to numbers. So that's the assistant winter cheerleading coach. Again, I believe we have 11 or 12 that have indicated interest. I think once we hit six, we then need a second coach. So I think the number is more than support of approving an assistant cheer coach.
And that's just off of the survey, correct?
That's correct, right. Yeah, we've not had day one yet of winter.
And just a question about that while we're speaking of that. I don't mind having an assistant, but the every home sporting event that we have, we should have cheerleaders at, correct?
For the winter?
Yes. So I just ask, because last year, basketball games would come and the cheerleaders would show up in street clothes and watch the game. So I'm confused as to why that happens. So I don't mind hiring somebody, but if we're having two coaches, let's make sure they're at all the sporting events that we have.
I'll let Mr. Brooke know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any discussion? Do I need a second?
I'll second.
Send a real poll vote, please.
Mrs. Hollinger?
Yeah.
Mr. Dean Genaro?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Holtz?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Seers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturgis?
Yes.
Mr. Liller?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferguson Miller?
Yes.
Very proud of the scene.
I was watching here.
Thank you.
We have a new middle school social studies teacher, Jacob McCollum. Welcome to Fairfield. Other discussion items, we have a lot. Other discussion items, we have a lot of recognition tonight. Mr. Halp, would you like to start us off here?
Sure, I would love to. So, uh, again, this is, quite frankly, one of my favorite months, not that the others aren't that great, coming to board meetings, but we recognize staff. Typically, uh, in our October, uh, in our October meeting. And, and really, there's an added layer to recognition tonight, so typically it's the years of service. Uh, so I know it's in the agenda, but I just want to read the, the names as well. So thirty years of service. Debbie Kennedy, Debbie, if you can stand up, I promise you that we'll record that. I don't think I've seen the twenty-five-year folks, but if I've missed you, 'cause I have to stand to see in the back. Uh, Dr. Danny Meisel-Redding, twenty-five years, Ellen Wagner, twenty-five years, and Angie Hertz, twenty-five years. Don't think I saw any of them come in. But I think we should still applaud them for uh, and then twenty-year recipients, Kayla Martin, Patsy Mills, and Ron Reynolds. So around, uh, the outside of the board, uh, we'll start with Mrs. Kirchner. They have, uh, a gift card for, for you based on years of service, uh, as well as a certificate. So, Mrs. Kirchner.
So Debbie, I get to be the first one. Congratulations on your thirty years.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
It's okay, we just wanna read and, and just, I mean, even say in a dollar amount?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Debbie, congratulations. We gave you $200 for your service.
Uh, that's Angie Hertz, and, uh, she has twenty-five years of service, and it is a hundred and fifty-dollar gift card.
And I have Danny Meisel-Redding for twenty-five years of service at a hundred and fifty dollars. Pretty game show.
I have Mrs. Ellen Wagner for twenty-five years at a hundred and fifty dollars.
What's my answer to you? Yes. I have, I have Kayla Martin. Twenty years of service, one hundred dollars.
And I have Patsy Mills, twenty years of service. Great music. And a hundred dollars.
I have Mr. Reynolds, four years of service. Just waiting for you to do it. So, so I will say, a couple of years ago, uh, in asking some of the recipients of, of their, their years of service, we really asked, like, what, what's more meaningful? Some gifts that we could give you as a district, uh, maybe you don't find as valuable as maybe we thought, uh, or gift cards that you can then go buy, uh, with that what you wish. So, uh, that was, uh, the, the thought then. That's why we've continued with that. So I truly hope that you buy something very meaningful for yourself. And again, thank you for, for your time with the district. And, uh, Debbie, I know you're not with us anymore, and Ron, you were not either. Uh, but those that are continuing with us, we, we appreciate you continuing on the journey. So thank you again for, for your dedication to the district. Uh, the, the next, uh, recognition, where is Mrs. Donaldson hiding? In the back. Susan, can you just stand up for a minute for me? Thank you. Uh, so, so the next recognition is really something that, uh, I will not take credit for, and I asked Susan to stand because, uh, every year we have an opportunity to recognize two teachers in the district, up to two teachers, I should say, uh, through the Chippensburg University Superintendent Study Council. Uh, and we get to then identify people in our district that we view as outstanding teachers. So, uh, last year in twenty-four, uh, Susan was recognized as that. And Mr. McDonald, now we're sitting at the luncheon with, uh, Mrs. Donaldson and just saying, like, well, how else could we recognize, other than the luncheon, which I think is good and it's nice, how else could we recognize those recipients? Not only those in the past, but also those, uh, moving forward. And Susan, what did you say? Do you remember what you told me?
I don't remember the words, but I said a plaque of recognition would be nice somewhere.
So a plaque of recognition would be great. And so we worked with, uh, some students and Mr. Hotter, and I hope this table can't move it. So we wanted to create a plaque, it's Susan's great suggestion, that not only tells what, uh, the award is for, who has earned them in, uh, years previous, but also leave plenty of room so it can continue to grow. So I saw Mr. Hotter here, Lincoln, I think you are the lone student representative that came. So I really, from Susan's suggestion, worked with Mr. Hotter and three students. Uh, Lincoln, you are here, but I also have to give a shout out to Ethan Taylor and Kennedy McDonald. Gave them an idea, said I'd love a plaque, something that's pretty sizable that we can add to, uh, asked them to make three of them, uh, so we can put one in the auditorium, or I'm sorry, the uh, gymnasium entrance, one at the middle school, high school entrance, and one at the elementary entrance. So we can make sure that everybody sees our outstanding teachers. So Susan, thank you for the idea. Mr. Hotter and Ken and others, thank you for your great work. And again, this is why the rest of you, uh, are present this evening. So we wanna recognize your outstanding uh, service as well. But these are the plaques that will hang, uh, in, in our buildings.
Light them up. Make sure you lit.
Light them up. I agree. Uh, a-again, if you wanna, like, get a workout, pick it up a couple of times. It's very thick. I don't know if you did that personally, but, uh, again, they're very purposeful. If you can't see, yeah, again, tell me what this is, again.
It's a bit epoxy.
Epoxy. So you can drill into it, it won't crack, it won't chip. Uh, so they put a lot of effort and energy and, uh, really design into it. The shield is important, Lincoln, why?
Because it represents a knight.
Represents a knight. So, like, the, the thought and effort that the, the kids really put into this, thank you, uh, for doing it. And again, I'm confident they are saying thank you as well for, for designing this. So, uh, without further ado, uh, Mr. Lillard and Mrs. Ferguson Miller, if you want to, uh, identify those that are here from the list. And so I don't forget before they do. Some, some folks are truly unable to come and see, but they, they would love to be here, uh, but some health reasons are preventing them from being. So we have had some requests that, for those of you that have come tonight, that we get a picture, uh, with you around the plaque. Uh, if you would like it, uh, my thought was we would just send that picture out to all of you, uh, as recipients, uh, and definitely to those that wanted to be here, but again, are just unable to. So, uh, if you're good with that, I hear, I see heads nodding, uh, we will just do that. So you can kinda hang around, that would be awesome. And we do have, uh, like beverages and some things in another room that we can spend time mingling and chatting and catching up hopefully, uh, for some of you. So with that, I'm gonna sit, turn it over to Mrs. Ferguson Miller and Mr. Brook.
Okay, um, we'll start out with Christine Shaper, two thousand eight.
Shepherd.
Shepherd.
Yep.
Sorry. Frances Bassett.
Yeah.
Uh, two thousand ten.
I don't think Frances is here.
Fellow graduate, uh, I graduated with, uh, Patrick, Patrick Andrews, two thousand. Michael Rupp Senior, two thousand eleven. At the, at the surface, two thousand twelve.
Mrs. Fox? Anne O'Connor, two thousand thirteen. Erin McCallister.
McCosler.
McCosler.
Cosler.
Here, two thousand fourteen. Jennifer Stables. Stubble. Really gonna do that on these. Two thousand fourteen. Mr. Irwin. Mr. Irwin.
Uh, Sharon Tucky, two thousand fifteen.
What is not here?
Regina Arvudis. Thank you. Two thousand sixteen. Linda McMullin, two thousand seventeen. Dane Murray, two thousand seventeen. Brad Barnes, two thousand eighteen.
Brittany Hope, two thousand eighteen. Taryn Mumert, two thousand nineteen. Tara Phelps, Phillips, sorry, put them together, two thousand nineteen. As I would know her, Mrs. White. Siri Phelps. Justine Given. Suzanne Donaldson. Rachel Kemp. And Marcy Kozak.
So Marcy and Rachel are actually, uh, this year's recipients, uh, so we've not done the luncheon yet, but, if you have some other wonderful ideas, we'll be picking you up soon. So, but, uh, again, Susan, thank you very much, uh, for the suggestion. Uh, and again, just really special thanks to Lincoln, uh, Ethan and Kennedy, and Mr. Hotter, thank you for your work with them. I, I certainly couldn't, uh, design that and, and do what they've done. And again, I think it'll just be a testament to the teacher of the quality that we have, not only for those in the room, but those for years to come. So thank you all very much for being here.
Thank you. And then I have one last public comment, Laura Fisher.
Um, in the last couple of weeks since our last meeting, well, the Parent Square, we got a notification as a senior mom that chaperones will not be permitted on the senior trip to forge Gettysburg, I think. Um, and it kinda hit me because we had just come out of this meeting and it's gonna be four or five teachers from the district going, which kind of, I guess after the meeting last meeting, rubbed me a little bit because we don't have a substitute pool to pull from. And I'm sure that they're gonna be out of, out of state with our children, approximately forty-two of the seniors, that, um, there, I would think that there would be some kind of an incentive for them to go and watch these children while they're out of state. Um, so I would think that there gotta be some kind of an increase in salary or something for that type of situation. There are many, many parents that have shown interest in going, and they're being told they can't. Myself included, for the simple fact that it's like your last hurrah with your senior. I don't cost this district any money, and as taxpayers, seeing how we have a shortage, we're using our intervention, I can't remember what they are, our special teachers to fill students' or teacher positions right now so that they are having just an adult in the classroom. I just feel like that kind of conversation or decision needs to be revamped or revisited because I don't think it's a district smart financially, and I don't think it's a, a I, I think there should be a little bit of parent involvement in something that that is that big of a deal. In my opinion, as, you don't get to spend a whole lot of time with your seniors, as many of you probably know, they do their own thing. So that would be something that you're not gonna be with them the whole time, but that would be a memory that you get to carry on with your child. So as a board, I would hope that if this comes to you, I don't know how, who makes the decision, how that decision comes, that maybe that would be something that would be discussed. I know district employees do have to be on this, the trip, that makes perfect sense. But I, I would hope that parents don't get to chaperone middle school, very many things in middle school and nothing really in high school. So I feel like that would be something your parents are willing to do. Why would we not, as a district, want to take that financial burden off the district, covering that, and let the parents go and visit, urge, chaperoning the seniors?
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we off your email? Yes, I know. I have no other public comment for tonight. So I have a couple informational items here before we end the meeting. The next regular board meeting is November seventeenth, in the building at seven PM. There is only one board meeting in November, just so everyone is aware. So that is a regular, only meeting in November. Um, we held an executive session on October thirteenth, fifteenth, and twenty-seventh for personnel and legal matters. The district received a thousand dollars from American Bikers on a Mission to help us start a care closet, um, for the middle school and high school. And I am very near, I'm dear to that, 'cause I think that is something that is really gonna help our district, um, and our students. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. The district received a donation of drum sets from Mark Carlson to be used in the music department, approximately a thousand dollars. And the district received a trumpet from Brian Fitzgerald to be used also in the music department, valued at approximately seven hundred dollars. So we do appreciate those also. And then if there's nothing else, or any other discussion item, then I need a motion to adjourn.
I have something.
Yes.
I emailed, um, I emailed the board this, uh, this PSBA revision that they were, they're encouraging boards to sign. Um, basically what it is, is, um, it would be, uh, us signing a document urging Pennsylvania General Assembly to end the state budget impacts. It's just us saying, hey, do your job, basically. So, um, I don't know if this is something that we need to vote on.
You would.
Okay, so, oh. Again, I would just really ask, is that something that the board is, uh, interested in considering? We can bring that to you again, in our November voting meeting, and it would, it would be something that you would need to vote on. Again, if you're interested in, uh, again, it's, it's, I won't call it a form letter, but, uh, again, we've all received those as districts. Uh, as, uh, again, Mr. Sayers indicated, it's really encouraging boards to, uh, again, encourage, uh, speed up the, the budget impasse. I think it's over a hundred days, uh, at the moment. Uh, and again, a lot of districts, thankfully, we're not one of them yet, uh, are really feeling that, that squeeze and that pinch. Um, and I would say locally, I know that there are some that, uh, are, are really just paying bills at the moment and not really purchasing things uh, for students or others. So, um, it is something that you have available to you. Uh, if you, again, want that, I would just ask, like, thumbs up or down, and then we can bring that to you, or you just want me to bring it and then you vote on it accordingly on the, on the seventeenth. That might even be a better, yeah, you say that. We'll just bring it forward and then you vote accordingly on the seventeenth. We may have a budget plan. We may have. We may. That's good options.
Thank you, Ted.
Yep. Thank you.
Anything, any other discussion items? And I need a motion to adjourn.
And then we can adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Leading is adjourned.
Okay, so room two forty, it's literally right over there, and I just have to go lift the lid on a couple.